The first item on the agenda is roll call.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Alderman Randolph.
Here.
Alderwoman Jones. Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Here.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Here.
Alderman Maloney.
Here.
Alderman Rousey.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. The next item is pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for both our military members as well as our public safety members?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. You may be seated. The next item is the approval of tonight's agenda, and I'd like to modify the agenda by pulling item N, which is bill number 7864. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I make a motion to approve tonight's amended agenda, removing item N.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the amended agenda has been approved. The next area is to approval of the minutes from the regular sessions of July 22nd. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
I move that we approve the regular session minutes for July the 22nd, 2025, aspirin.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
I second.
Been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the regular session minutes from July 22nd, 2025 have been approved. The next area is awards, presentation, organizational business, and we have a recognition of Neveah Harding as well as a presentation for the yard of the month for 2025. So we will start with Ms. Harding, and we'll go from there. Do you need anybody else to take pictures? Erica? Okay, you, okay, Holly's got two phones.
Um, if one more person wanted to say, "Thank you so much," on that side, we'll be great. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Needless to say, this is a wonderful moment again. We've had the opportunity to recognize Neveah for a number of occasions, and also our Homes Association, we've been able to recognize her there as well. But she's been busy. There is an awesome picture on the screen. And I don't know who went to the process and all the work to spread those out. Because you couldn't do that, eh, okay? But a very, very, very lovely picture. So, absolutely. And this is a certificate recognizing Neveah Harding, presented in recognition of her title as 2025 National American Miss Missouri Teen. Awesome by itself. Absolutely. And I can, I can also tell you she is as humble as the day is long, but what a, what a wonderful person. On behalf of the Grandview Board of Aldermen and the citizens of the city of Grandview, we congratulate her on her impressive accomplishments, accompanying her title as Miss Missouri Teen Division. She also acquired first place best resume, first place casual wear model, first place dream model, first place fun fitness model, first place Miss Personality, first place Miss Photogenic, first place runway model. And if there were other first places, I think you would have gotten them too, okay? If, if they were, if they were available. She's also Spirit of Pageantry Award overall winner for Miss Teen Division, and she just won the 2025, 2026 Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship for Longview Community College, providing her a full sophomore year of school. What a blessing. Signed this day, August 12th, 2025. I'm gonna hand this to Mom, okay? I'm gonna hand the mic to you. And once again, thank you. This is Mom Erica.
Yes.
This is Dad Andre, and you can introduce the rest of the family.
Yes. Yes. Okay, hello, everybody. My name is Neveah Harding, and I am just so honored to be recognized here by all of you today. And yes, my beautiful family. This is my mom and my dad. This is my oldest brother Elijah. He's the oldest of the family. And then me, and then we have Zephaniah back here. He is 12 years old. We have Zion. He's 11. And then next is Aliah. She's nine. And then next is Isaiah. He just turned six years old. And Josiah Justice, he is four. And we have Makiah here, and he's two years old. And so they're my biggest support system. And I love them so much. And yeah, I'm so grateful for this opportunity to bring them here, but also to just represent Grandview, Missouri, and the state of Missouri this year. I am so excited to just work in my community and also share my personality, who I am. And my biggest goal this year will be to spread awareness about self-care, people's self-worth, and also just mental health in the school system, specifically middle schools and high schools. So I cannot wait for the opportunity to just work with my community and community leaders. So thank you again, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
This is, this is a great honor. But just for the record, this is all that Andre and Erica have as far as kids so far, okay? I don't know where this, I don't know where this stops, okay? But it is what it is, right? But congratulations again. Thank you not only to you, but Mom and Dad and the family. Thank you, thank you, thank you for just representing Grandview the way you guys have. It's been amazing. So appreciate it. We've got some Board of Aldermen members. Like to shake all of your hands. So we're gonna start there with Annette. Would you come on around, and we will congratulate you accordingly? Absolutely. But Mama, just for a moment, we're gonna let you share what you've been through and the blessings that you have received through that process.
Well, it is an honor to represent Grandview, Missouri as a mom. We are a family of 10 every day. And so my day looks like I'm a homeschooling mom, and I have graduated the two of my students. Elijah being the oldest at 24, graduated homeschool with me. Also graduated with honors his first two years, getting his associate degree in cybersecurity, and now finishing his degree at UMKC with criminal justice. And I also have six others that I'm also homeschooling at home, but I also have had the awesome privilege of being a substitute teacher in the Grandview School District. So I've touched the elementary, middle, and high schools here in Grandview. I'm a teacher at heart, but most of all, I want to be a representation. I've raised my children along with my husband. We, we just vowed to, my husband wanted seven children. I said, no, but I gave him eight. And because he is an amazing husband, he takes good care of all of us. He works really hard. But it's not easy. You probably all know that. We fight all the, the different things in society, but we have vowed to stick together, continue to say yes, get back up, and I've trained my children to be a blessing. So wherever they go, I'm asking them to honor our name, to always leave things at least the same or better when they found it. And I just believe in when they sow good things into other people and society, it will come back into their lives. So that's how I live my life, and it's sacrificial. I've been homeschooling at home for 20 years now. But I also do things in the community and touch different people in the society, and they see me as that. But they all are phenomenal. We have a junior engineer. He makes his own robots from cardboard and old electronics. We have a junior scientist right now who loves biology and anatomy. And we also have here, she wants to be a chef, and she also loves clothing lines, so. And then we have some little ones, a little ninja here. I just find all of their traits, all of the things that they love, and I give no limitations. My little ones have already read high school textbooks in the area that they love because there's no limitations. And if you train up a child in the way they should go, they will continue in that. So I just believe in that, and I love Grandview, and I love Missouri. So, and thank you for coming here and supporting us, and thank you for the mayor honoring us and giving us an opportunity to be a voice in the community. So thank you for that. And my awesome, amazing husband, you have anything to say?
Just that we're thankful for the opportunity and how you chose to honor her and her accomplishments, and just grateful. She's made me proud as a, as a daddy and, and our wife as well, and our whole family. And so we just thank you for taking the time to honor her at this, at this meeting here. We thank all y'all for being here and participating in that.
Thank you, absolutely. And, and just for the record, Mr. Andre is very few words, but as soon as she won, he was texting me. I mean, my phone was blowing up, trying to think, what in the world? I told Michelle, okay, he's texting me, you know, Neveah won, so I was like, okay, we'll, we'll go from there, so. Awesome. Listen, if, if the board, if you guys will squeeze in, we're gonna get a, a photo of everybody up here. So if you guys, no, no, you stay where you are there. No, no. Yes, you stay. You can, you can get in the center there. It's fine. Come on up. Now, make sure you can get everybody's. Can you get everybody in there? Everybody's? Let's give Neveah and the rest of the Harding family a round of applause. Job well done. I'll take care of that, for sure. Absolutely. Once again, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. And shake my hand. Come back, come back. Yes, gotta do that. You're gonna be an engineer. You've gotta shake my hand. Okay? All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, all right. Thank you. Awesome, awesome. Now I need my tablet, don't I? So that. Oh, of course you can. Oh. Do we have the bags already? Are they here? We don't know. We'll find out. So the other thing we, we tend to do is we recognize yard of the month. And on the screen there, Melissa has gotten, has put up there the yard of the month winners. So Ward one was both Marsha and William. They here? Come on up? Or come on down, I guess we should say. Now, now you can do the moonwalk back, and that'd be good, too. So, so again, there are pictures up there, and we are grateful for what you have done. Ward two, we have the Coxes. And are the Coxes here for Ward two? Okay, we don't have them. And Ward three is the Shoemakers, and they are here. So awesome. You've got, you've got to do the walk, and you've got to do the wave. You gotta. Neveah, uh, Neveah, show us how to wave. Okay, you, you got, you, you got, you gotta show us with the wave. Well, we want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do. You know, we have staff that goes out and looking at everybody's yard for yard of the month winners. You won. So we are grateful for what you're doing. And again, if you look up there in the screen, you can see the houses, and we, they look fantastic. So thank you for doing all you can to keep Grandview looking good. So we appreciate it. We've got some trinkets in there. We've got a coupon that you can go and have a nice meal in Grandview. And just continue up the good work, okay? And we've got the Board of Aldermen behind you. We're gonna start with, go around with Irene and make our way around. So thank you.
The next item we have on the agenda is public comment. Anyone who would like to address the Board of Aldermen, please step up to the mic, state your name and address, and do sign in. And you have three minutes to address the Board of Aldermen. The time is 7:18. I declare public comment open. I don't see anyone approaching, so I declare public comment closed. The next area is public hearing. We have a public hearing for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 proposed budget. And we have another Grandview High School graduate that's going to provide some feedback for us. So state your name and address, and let us know.
I am from Grandview. I live right off of 14300 Oakland Court. Today, I will be discussing our public hearing for the budget with exciting news. So the budget was presented to the governing body on August 6th of 2025 and published to the Kansas City Daily Record on August 8th. The total proposed expenditures for all the funds is $60,438,100. The public hearing is to solicit input for the public on the proposed budget. The general fund revenues are projected to be, to rise by 10% in 2026 as the increase in sales and use tax revenues and property tax provides a significant portion of the next year's increase particularly. The sales and the use tax are expected to increase approximately 18% in the fiscal year of 2026 due to inflation, consumer spending, and implementation of recreational use of marijuana sales tax. The property taxes are expected to increase 5%, which includes the Hancock Amendment CPI adjustment and over $32 million of new construction and improvements during the calendar year of 2024. This is a testament to show how much Grandview is continuing to grow and thrive. This, these revenue sources comprise 53% of the general fund operating revenues and together are expected to increase nearly 13%, which is a significant portion of the expected general fund increase in the fiscal year of 2026. And 2026 will be a busy and exciting year and to be on the continuation of the city's strategic and aggressive investment in infrastructure and community building projects that will propel Grandview into the next decade and beyond. Overall, the expenditures are $60,438,100. Noteworthy expenditures include the Blue Ridge Boulevard revitalization, the groundbreaking of the Phase 1 of the $24 million Blue Ridge Boulevard Improvement Project. The largest infrastructure initiative that the Grandview history was on August 4th. The Main Street Market, 2, or 2.1 million allocated for construction for the Main Street Market, supporting local commerce and community engagement. And another is the municipal service campus upgrade. $1.1 million for exterior improvements at the city hall, the police department, and the DMV included new signage, parking lot upgrades, and overall site enhancements. The transportation sales tax funded maintenance. For the seventh consecutive year, the city has increased funding for the street maintenance, curb repair, and sidewalk replacement. We've also got a new lease, new police package vehicles, a extractor unit to properly clean our fire truck bunkers gear, monies for the grant fund Bailey Bridge intro near Southview Park, and $1.5 million for a new fire truck. The board will get, will begin the deliberation of the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget later. This evening at their working session weekly through September 2nd. The final budget adoption is scheduled for September 9th. And a copy of the proposed budget is available for viewing by the public at the Municipal Service Building during normal business hours or online at www.grandview.org/budget.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, sir, for that. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to address the Board of Aldermen on this public hearing, please step up and do that. And I'm gonna also ask the, the board, any, any questions on my right? Regarding, any questions on my left?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Kurt, I just had one question here. In the media here, we've been talking about possible changes that's gonna be happening at the state level when it comes to plates and tags and, and different things like that. So when I was looking at the revenues from licenses and permits and such, if they start permitting at the locations that they're gonna be driving, do you think that's gonna have a positive or negative effect when it comes to licensing the vehicle here in the city, when it comes to revenue sites? I see that we have like a modest increase, not a huge one, but you don't think it'll have a negative impact?
Alderman Maloney, it'll have no impact. It'll be similar to what they do in Kansas. They will pay it at a dealership, and they're gonna phase that in slowly. They're starting with some of the bigger dealerships in the next year. So it's gonna be a while till it's integrated with all dealerships. But basically, if it's a Grandview resident who buys it from a dealership, Grandview is still going to get the sales tax. It's not based on where you register the vehicle. It's based on where you live. The increase in the license office fees you see in there is just because the, the state of Missouri just increased their license office fees. Our office will get $2 per transaction more. It'll cost $3, and then $1 will go into a fund that gets distributed among all license offices equally. That's to help some of the smaller offices that have really been kind of on the verge of not staying in business because the inflation, inflationary costs of personnel have exceeded really the, the revenues that those offices bring in.
All right, thank you.
And again, it is good to hear in, in the write-up that you just shared with us that we have an increase in, you know, sidewalk and curbs and, and, you know, for many years. And that has been one of the strategic goals for the Board of Aldermen, and, and we have been doing that year over year over year. So thank you very much. We appreciate. This is the first time you've addressed the Board of Aldermen. Job well done.
Mayor, you're gonna get to see him again next week when we do our nine-month report.
Okay, awesome.
He's gonna be leading the charge there.
Looking forward to it.
So take it easy on him.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you again. I declare the public hearing closed at 7:24. The next items are consent items E through H. Is there a motion to approve consent items E through H?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion that we approve consent items E through H as printed and presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent items E through H have been approved. The next area is ordinances. Is there a motion for bill number 7859?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion that bill number 7859 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Bill number 7859, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment at 500 through 506 Main Street.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Make a motion. Bill number 7859 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Bill number 7859, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment at 500 through 506 Main Street.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
I move that bill number 7859 be moved, uh, be moved to its final passage and set bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Turnbaugh.
I second.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7596.
So bill number 7859 has passed. It's now ordinance 7596. Is there a motion on bill number 7860?
Mayor.
Alderman Turnbaugh.
I move that bill number 7860 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Kendrick. Thank you very much.
Bill number 7860, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for an auto repair business to be located on a parcel of land, Zone CS, commercial service, and wholesale, located at 13118 South US 71 Highway in Grandview, Jackson County, Missouri.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Nay.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7860 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number 7860, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for an auto repair business to be located on a parcel of land, Zone CS, commercial service, and wholesale, located at 13118 South US 71 Highway in Grandview, Jackson County, Missouri.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Nay.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
I move that bill number 7860 be placed on its final passage and set bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Turnbaugh.
I second.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbaugh.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Nay.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7597.
So bill number 7860 has passed. It's now ordinance 7597. Is there a motion on bill number 7861?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Make a motion that bill number 7861 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Turnbaugh.
I second.
Thank you.
Bill number 7861, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a Transportation Alternatives Program TAP agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for utilization of federal funds for the Harry S. Truman Trail Enhancement Project.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
While I don't support the entirety of the project, I do support the fact that we have to have a, an agreement for any types of payments there. Jared, I just had the question, if the scope of work changed at all, is that allowed? You know, you know, when it's coming through there, I know it's a cost split and everything, but if, if, say, we decide to build two bridges or one, I mean, can, can the project change after this point? Or is it lock, stock, and barrel in there? And if we did change, would they approve the money being spent?
So Athena's worked a little bit more with the Transportation Alternative Program than I had. Maybe she can speak a little bit to, maybe if they're, they can change scope a little bit. I'm sure they, they certainly can, but I'll let her answer that.
Because one of my, I guess, main question is, like, the mayor brought it up last week, like, we have a couple bridges. And I think this project, we have it scoped to build a new pedestrian bridge, but if we were to recycle
a new pedestrian bridge, but if we were to recycle a bridge that we already had, could that still get, is that still reimbursable cost at this point or not?
Um, so the scope of this project, well, actually, this Transportation Alternative grant is for us to build a pedestrian path, and as a part of that, we have to put in the bridge over the creek. But the goal for this is we want to reuse one of the old bridges that we have, the old bridge's substructure that we have to put on the, the foundation we need to construct. If that does not work, then we will acquire a new pedestrian metal bridge to put on it. So yeah, it's, when I wrote this grant, it's, it can apply for a bridge, not necessarily it was a new bridge, or the old bridge that we're using.
Okay. Thank you. That answered my question. Thank you, Athena.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a bill number 7861 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number 7861, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for utilization of federal funds for the Harry S Truman Trail Enhancement Project.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
I move that bill number 7861 be put on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7598.
So bill number 7861 has passed, it's now ordinance 7598. Is there a motion for bill number 7862?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I move that we put bill number 7862 on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Second.
Thank you.
Bill number 7862, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a Transportation Block Grant, STBG program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for utilization of federal funds for the Blue Ridge Boulevard Phase 3 project, I-49 to Grandview Road.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7862 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
I second.
Thank you.
Bill number 7862, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a Transportation Block Grant, STBG program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for utilization of federal funds for the Blue Ridge Boulevard Phase 3 project, I-49 to Grandview Road.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
I move that bill number 7862 be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
Second.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Kendrick.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turnbull.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7599.
So bill number 7862 has passed, it's now ordinance 7599.